I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you call a roll?
Yes, Mayor. A quorum is present for City Council, Successor Agency, Housing Authority, and Joint Powers Authority.
We'll have public comment. Any persons wishing to address the council on any items on today's agenda may do so at this time. Total is three minutes. Hearing no comment, we'll move on to Item 1, CSA 1 and H1.
Warrant register?
Receive and file. Madam City Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
The next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider adoption of the 2025 through 2026 Annual Action Plan.
Has a notice of the hearing been given in time form and matters required by law? And is there an affidavit on file?
Notice has been given and the affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received?
No communications have been received.
Is there a staff report on the matter?
There is, Mr. Mayor. Roberto Chavez will be giving the staff report.
Welcome, Mr. Chavez.
Thank you, thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. We're here today for our public hearing for the 2025 through 2026 Annual Action Plan as part of the Consolidated Plan for 2022 through 2026. I prepared a brief presentation to guide us through the, through the public hearing. So the Consolidated Plan is a five-year consolidated plan for the City of Inglewood that serves as the grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. The Consolidated Plan is carried out through five annual action plans which summarize the actions, activities, services, and the specific federal, non-federal resources that will be used each fiscal year and program year to address the priority needs and specific goals identified in the Consolidated Plan. CDBG and home allocations for '25-'26. As you can see, for CDBG, the city stands to receive just over $1.2 million, which is an increase of about 3%. And for the home program, just over $650,000, about a 1.3% increase for this coming fiscal year. What you have here is a side-by-side comparison of the year-over-year changes which reflect the increases. Community Engagement and Outreach HUD encourages the community to take part in the planning process for the development of the Consolidated Plan and the action, annual action plans. For '25-'26 Annual Action Plan, the city has provided the community a number of ways to participate in the process to develop the plan. What you have here is an outline schedule of the different events that have taken place. Since May 5th, the community survey was available. On May 6th, the city conducted a public hearing. On May 22nd, the community meeting was held via Zoom. On June 23rd through July 22nd, published the draft annual action plan and start of the 30-day public comment and review period. July 15th, the public hearing today to adopt the plan. On July 30th, we will submit the final '25-'26 Annual Action Plan to HUD. The statutory deadline is August 16th, so we'll be ahead of schedule there. Community Engagement and Outreach. As a result, the Community Engagement and Outreach, the city received the following top activities as the priority, community, and housing needs. Street improvements, sidewalk improvements, street lighting anti-crime programs, affordable housing for renters and homeowners, park improvements, shelter and services for those experiencing homelessness, health care and mental health services. CDBG Program. HUD awards CDBG to eligible communities to assist in the development of viable urban communities by providing additional resources to increase decent housing, support a suitable living environment principally for low and moderate income persons. CDBG regulations mandate the CDBG allocation to be used as followed. For administration, 20%. Public services is 15%. And some of those include employment, crime prevention and public safety, childcare, health services, substance abuse, fair housing counseling, services for seniors, homeless services. 75% should be used for public and facilities improvements that include public infrastructure like street sidewalks and alley improvements, neighborhood facilities like parks, community rooms, housing and other real property activities like homeowner, home rehabilitation activities, and homeownership assistance programs. The recommendation is the funding be used 20% for administration, 15% goes to house, fair housing and senior meals, and 65% will go to public infrastructure improvements and minor home rehabilitation program. That's very popular in the city. Home Investment Partnership Program, also referred to as the HOME, designed to expand and preserve supply of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing with primary attention to rental housing for very low and low-income families. Some of those illustrations as to the investment and homeownership programs are, are, are going to be described in the next slides. The Annual Action Plan Recommendations for the HOME Program. 10% must be used for administration, 15% is for the CHODO, which is a community housing development organization, and home-eligible activities, which is 75%. Here are some illustrations of the HOME investment that the city will be making. We'll be investing in 60 affordable rental units at 304 East Spruce and eight first-time home buyer, um, homes at 88205 Crenshaw Boulevard. And these are just illustrations. With that, that concludes my presentation, and we're open for public comments.
Okay, with that, we'll have anyone who wants to make public comment do so. Seeing no public comment, uh, move on into...
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Madam City Clerk, we're going to take PH 1 through PH 5. Did you want to pull 5?
Oh, it's PH 2 to PH 5.
Yeah. Oh, excuse me, I, I stand corrected.
Pulling 1.
I stand corrected. PH 2 to PH 5.
Right, so we would hear them all together, Mayor?
I got that, I got that. So anyway, Madam City Clerk, what's the next scheduled item? You're going to have to read a lot of stuff.
The next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider assessing levies for the Morningside Park Assessment District, 1974-2, Morningside Park District, and In-Town Maintenance Assessment District, 1975-1, In-Town District, and Inglewood Street Lighting Assessment District, 1980-1, Street Lighting District, and lastly, Darby Dixon Maintenance Assessment District, 1987-1, Darby Dixon District.
Has a notice of these hearings been given in time form and matters required by law?
Notice-
Do you have the affidavit on file?
Notice has been given and the affidavit is on file.
But I like your alacrity. Have any communications been received on the matter?
Yes, Mayor, communications have been received and passed out to the dais.
Okay, the public fourth comment portion is now open. Is there, uh, any public comment? Hearing no public comment, uh, we'll close public comment, move 1 and 2.
As to 1 and 2, Mayor of PH 2, PH 3, PH, all of them all together?
2, 3, 4, and 5.
Second.
Right.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may?
All right.
There, there was a change, I believe, to be made on PH 5, so-
That's what I was asking.
Okay. So, in the past couple years, this, the council has chosen not to levy Darby Dixon. Is that their choice? And this one, this would be PH 5?
And we stopped because?
Because it's primarily residential.
We chose to take on the expense as a city.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah.
Right, but, so why are we doing anything indifferent?
Because it's, it's, it's-
Oh, I see, I see.
We have to take that action every year.
Okay, I get it, so, so we're going to pull PH 5 off.
Yes.
We're going to do 1, 2, 3, and 4, and so I'm moving 2, 3, and 4.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
There was a motion already on the floor.
So, so I'm withdrawing it.
And I withdraw the second.
Right.
So now, as to the new motion?
The new motion is 2, 3, and 4.
Items 1 and 2 of each.
1 and 2 approval.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Now, as to PH 5, 1 and 2, if we're not going to prove it, why do we put it on? But anyway, so, do we have to move it and not vote for it?
We're going to make a motion as to not collect the levy and, uh, absorb the cost as a city.
All right, I'll second that. Been easier not to print it, but go ahead. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Don't get it. M1.
Approval of the minutes for the meeting held on May 13th, 2025, and May 20th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Uh, we're going to the consent count, our items 2 through 5.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. DR 1.
Staff report recommending the mayor and council members approve Amendment Number 2 to Agreement Number 23-275 to increase the compensation by $14,169,560 to extend the term to end on July 31st, 2028, and increase hourly rates for services.
Move 1 and 2.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. O1.
Staff report recommending the mayor and council members adopt ordinance number 2508-09, approving zone change number 23-00002 to allow a zone change of two parcels from MU1 to M1 and a portion of three parcels from M1 to MU1.
Motion away further reading.
Okay. Motion away further reading in 2nd.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Councilman Padilla, move to-
Move to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. O2.
Staff report recommending the mayor and council members adopt ordinance number 25-10, approving zone change number 23-00003 to allow a zone change of 14 parcels from M1 and R2 to MU1.
Motion away further reading.
Second, did we put one too many zeros? It doesn't really matter, right, because it's a zero. I think she read 5. In case someone's listening.
She meant four zeros.
But I'll second it.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, on the motion away further reading.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Going to be the lowest, longest closed session report in history. A1.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it short, Mayor.
I appreciate that.
So, it's, the, the city council met in closed session to discuss six items, uh, today. All members were present. With respect to all of the items, the city council received reports from staff and legal counsel. Questions and feedback were asked and provided, but no final action was taken. I'd also note for, um, Item CS 3, there was, um, direction on that item as well. The vote was 4 to 1 with Councilmember Padilla voting, um, to abstain. Thank you.
All right, um, A2. No further oral reports?
Nothing, nothing to report, Mayor, other than to, to say, um, I hope you have a wonderful rest of your Tuesday.
CM 1.
No reports, thanks.
Uh, CC 1.
The City Clerk just wanted everyone to keep the City Treasurer and their prayers on her recent loss. That's all, Mayor.
All right, the Successor Agency in session, CSA 2.
Approval of the minutes for the meeting held on May 3rd, 2000, May 13th, 2025, and May 20th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Successor Agency members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Adjourn the, uh, Successor Agency, Housing Authorities in session, H2.
Approval of the minutes for the meeting held on May 13th, 2025, and May 20th, 2025.
Approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. The Housing Authority is now adjourned. The JPA is in session, JPA 1.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on May 13th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Joint Powers Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Adjourn the JPA. There are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Um, public comment, uh, we did not have a scheduled presentation on the homeless count, but we can do it at the public comment section, so Cinder Eller has a report on our homeless count.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, Council, and our community. Um, I have great numbers, actually. Um, I'm pleased to announce for 2025, raw data totals for Inglewood are sheltered from 2024 was 224, and it went to 230. That's sheltered. The unsheltered went from 135 to 65. That's unsheltered. That means that's 65 people in the community that are unhoused, so I think that's phenomenal.
Right.
Um, 2024 for our car, our cars were 15, um, 2025 was 44, so our cars and our vans are going up. They've gone up. Um, for tents, 45 was 2024. For 2025, it was 12, and our makeshift shelters for 2024 was 24, and our 2025 was 18. So I think they were doing a great job. We still have a long way to go, but I think we're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And also, I just want to say thank you to the mayor and council and city clerk, um, for attending my mother's, our mother, Marcus and I mothers' service. Thank you so much for your prayers.
All right, with that, we'll close public comment. Mayor and Council remarked, Councilwoman Gray, District 1.
Thank you, Ellen.
We do.
I do have someone.
Yes, ma'am. Please step forward.
Just go back to the mic.
Good afternoon. This is my first time, so I don't know if I'm in order or not, but I just wanted to, um, say how disappointed I was to find out about the library being closed. There's nothing wrong with that library. I go there. People are there just to study, to get out of the elements, the weather, or to use the computers like I do, or to print stuff out. You don't need a, a state-of-the-art, uh, library for that. You just need what we have over there. And now the kids are out of school. They can't even go to the library and check out books. You got to go to another city to check out books. And then I want to add, I enjoyed that fireworks display on the 4th of July. I'm sorry, but I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Just an FYI, ma'am, it's closed because it's undergoing renovations, and so it wouldn't be safe for people to be in the library right now. Council remarked, Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, everyone, for being here. It's always great to see the public here. I encourage everyone who can be here to see what happens with your elected officials, how we're engaged, and what happens in our community. I do want to thank Cinder Eller for that report. It's great to hear good numbers that people are being housed, so thank you to you and the chief, rata rata, uh, for your commitment to addressing homeless issues here in Inglewood. Many of you are aware that there is a, um, um, a delay in trash and recycling collection due to, uh, labor stoppage. It should be out of control. I think the mayor is going to make some comments regarding it later, so I just want to say that. Also, on our agenda, we had PH-2, which had to do with the Morningside Park Assessment District, um, uh, assessment fees, and I was told that there is no increase in collecting those fees, so I just want everyone to know that, because it does affect an area in my district. I want to report, we had a wonderful community meeting last week, uh, at the I-COP Center. We had standing room only. You can see all the folks there in the room. We had our mayor, let's see, that, well, that, those are some folks. There was Angela Allen, our treasurer was there, and we had some folks from the Carpenters Union. Uh, you can see the folks that was standing room only. There's a picture that has the mayor, myself, and thank you, Mayor, and, and Councilman Padilla for being there, and County Superintendent was there, and thank you, Mr. Adwell, our city manager. You can see, Akima was there, and, uh, Angela Bernard, and, uh, um, Captain Hurt, um, let's see, uh-
Dr. Morris.
Dr. Morris, Chris Jackson, Tony Olmos, and Pastor, uh, from Center of Hope, Dixon. Pastor Dixon was there, and what's the young man next to Captain Hurt? I don't want to forget anyone. What's his name? Mandier. He was there.
I'm, I'm right there, too, on the other side of Tony.
Where are you?
The other side of Tony Olmos. Cut me out.
I'm right there, next to our new ACM. You guys can't see me.
We know you and Deion was there in spirit, right, right, so I want to thank everyone for coming, because the community was totally engaged. We were there for two and a half hours, and they didn't want to stop. The mayor even stayed there for a long time, so I think, uh, he enjoyed the camaraderie and just seeing, uh, some of his constituents in the city. But thank you to everyone for coming out. There were great questions. Uh, Chris Jackson stayed throughout the whole thing, and Bill Thompson and his team, and Tony Olmos, they had great questions, so thank you all for being there, answering the questions in a very thorough and thoughtful way. Thank you, Angela and Maze for facilitating all this, and Gwen Goodman. It, it was great, so I enjoy engaging in the community. I know the mayor does, too, and, and, uh, Councilman Padilla, they all make comments there, so thank you for being there. Ayesha was not able to be there, and I just, I think I heard you say there was some condolences in her family?
Uncle.
Uncle, okay. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, Ayesha, you're there, Angela, so, sorry. Ayesha wasn't at the event, but I know you could have been there, so Angela, my condolences to you and your family. One last thing, if I could, Mayor, um, um, last Friday was 7-Eleven Day, and I know you've been to all the 7-Elevens in the district, and it was wonderful. I hadn't gone to all the 7-Elevens in my district before, but they gave away free Slurpees, got a chance to meet some of the, um, owners of the 7-Eleven stores in my district, and some of the constituents, so thank you for that. And lastly, I want to remind everybody, July 26th, Family Unity Day, please come out. We have a terrific event planned for you, music, free food, uh, things for the kids, and I will report more on it next week, but remember, July 26th, 12 to 5 o'clock. Thank you to staff for helping to do this, and 360 for producing it, so thank you very much, Mayor.
You going to tell them it's at Darby Park?
Oh, at Darby Park, at Darby Park, July 26th, 12 to 5. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. They would come, they would come to your house. Um, Councilman Padilla, District 2.
Oh, okay.
The afterparty, the afterparty. So a couple of things, uh, again, Cinder, great report. I want to also thank the community members that came out to help with the count of the unhoused, you know, and, uh, we're always doing as much as we can to help those that are in need. Uh, that's part of what we do here in the City of Inglewood, so I want to thank everybody for participating to help us make sure we get our numbers right, so thank you for doing that. As it relates to the library, you know, the, the reason that it's closed down right now, as we are, as the major, mayor said, making some, some amazing improvements that are going to benefit not only the community, but as importantly, and maybe more importantly, our children, our young adults, our high school students, so that they can have the resources and be in an environment that is conducive to learning, to being educated, and to having resources at their fingertips. So Carrie, I want to thank you and your staff for everything you're doing to keep our library work moving in a positive direction. As it relates to the, uh, labor stoppage with Republic Services, I think we have all received, uh, emails and phone calls, and I can tell you, Tony Olmos, our Public Works Director, has been amazing working with staff to make sure we get the information out there. We have a location, uh, right here on, uh, on Locust, on Nutwood, I'm sorry, on Nutwood. 122 Nutwood, where folks can bring their trash, if they have it in a bag or box, and put it in the, uh, in the big containers that are out there. This is our effort to help folks, so if you have stuff you want to drop off there, please, you're welcome to do so. Uh, our hope is that this, uh, labor, uh, stoppage will be over sooner than later, hopefully in the next couple of days, if that, and we'll be back on track, so please bear with us, be patient. We're working on it, and we're hoping to get everything, uh, going again. I do want to say, Gloria, you know, your, your town hall, your, your community meeting was great, uh, and you're right, standing room only. Uh, it's good to see the folks out there, uh, not only from District 1, from throughout the city, and for them to be out there, number one, to mingle with each other. There is the photo right there, that's the keeper. For them to get to know each other, that's what's important, neighbors getting to know neighbors, and so that provided that environment for that. Uh, I also want to take, uh, a second to invite everybody to our District 2 picnic and the chili cook-off. Now, I think I have one spot left. I'm not sure. I think the Girl Scouts might have taken it. Uh, I'll know today, you know, but we usually have 12 contestants for the chili cook-off. I think we've hit that limit, uh, and that's great, and that's on August 16th, Saturday, from 4 to 7, and then after that, we have a movie in the park. And lastly, condolences to you, Angela, on the loss of your uncle. May God watch over him, and may his soul rest in eternal paradise.
Councilwoman Deion Falk, District 4.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too want to extend my condolences to you. I'm very sorry for that, and I know that he just recently had that situation, so- I'm very sorry for that, and I know that he just recently had that situation, so I'm really sorry. I also want to extend just a lot of encouragement, support, and thank you for, Cinder Ella, for always doing a great job on the homeless count every year. We appreciate you. And I know that this was a difficult time for you, because you just lost your mother. So we appreciate you still extending yourself and getting out there and doing that, in spite of you recently losing your mom. So, thank you. I want to acknowledge the Century Heights Neighborhood Watch Association. Every year, they make a point to raise money and make, give scholarships to at least one student. So this year, they were able to give out two scholarships. Romeo Flores and Jerusalem Iliskas are both proud graduates of Morningside High School, class of 2025, the last graduating class. There we go, proud alum out there. Jerusalem, congratulations. She's going to University of Southern California. And Romeo is going to Howard University, HBCU. So congratulations to them for their job well done. I also want to congratulate a wonderful pastor in my district, Pastor Nicole Stelli. She is the pastor of Armed Church right there on Imperial. And she celebrated her first-year anniversary this weekend, and it was, she's just been doing such an amazing job. So congratulations to Pastor Stelli. And you will see a lot of great things coming out of Armed Church going forward, because they are a church on the move. So. I also want to congratulate and wish a very happy birthday to several people. First is Sidya, from City Hall, of course. Sidya Lenvend, I can never pronounce the last.
Landeverdy.
Thank you, Mayor. There she is. Look at that pretty girl. Happy birthday, Sidya. And then also Yolanda Parsons at City Hall, recently just celebrated her birthday. Happy birthday, Yolanda. And then also, I have Jennifer Brown. It is Henry Brown and Benisa's Brown's daughter. She actually works at the Costco, and it is her birthday. So happy birthday. She just recently celebrated. And then also, I want to wish a very, very happy, oh, that was the picture from the Costco event that we went to last week, the mayor and I. I also want to wish a very happy 36th wedding anniversary to Cheryl and Andre Williams. She is our planning commissioner for District Four, and her husband, 36 years now. That's a long time to be married, so congratulations to them. Congratulations. Two more things, Mayor. Thank you. Really quickly, I want to, I missed thanking the social media team last week for everything that they did for the music festival. So thank you so much, our wonderful social media team, Thomas Bun, Kendall Sellers, Alani Perkins, and Carlos Orozkos. Thank you so much. I appreciate you all. Lastly, I'm gonna try and tell this story really quickly. This is a wonderful story about IPD. So Mayor, I think you're gonna really like this story.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, let me see how quickly I can tell it. So I actually dropped my husband off late on Sunday evening at the airport. I was coming back. It was probably close to 1:00, because he had a 12:30 flight. And I was coming up Crenshaw Boulevard, and we had a light at 104th on Crenshaw Boulevard. I was going north. So you know how we all see people running red lights these days, right? Driving crazy. Stopped at a light, and the guy that was right next to me in a Kia, next thing you know, the light's red. He runs the red light, right? And so it was really scary, because if somebody had been crossing the street, or somebody had made a left turn, he would have killed them, because he ran it, and he ran it quickly. So I'm like, God, dog, like, there's another person running the red light. And so all of a sudden, I look up, and from the other direction, all of a sudden, I see an SUV coming, and they came pretty quickly. They made a U-turn right in front of everybody that was waiting at the lights. And as they turned the corner, we saw the sign, and it said, "Inglewood Police Department." And it was almost like they had a cape on. They were like Superman, because they turned so quickly, and next thing you know, they had the sirens on, and they took off, and they caught the guy. And I was so happy to see our IPD, and I always call them Inglewood's finest, but I really appreciate them and what they did. And they kept somebody from possibly being killed, because just like he ran that light, he was getting ready to run the next one. And it felt so good. When I drove past him, I looked at him, I saw IPD, and I was like, yes! And so, just a great story, Mayor. I know you're a police chief and everything, and so I just wanted to lift up Inglewood Police Department today. Thank you, IPD! Yes! That's all I have, Mayor.
That's it? Okay, Eli, Eli.
The way that story started, I thought they caught you speeding, dude. I was like, oh, man, I've been in the car with him before.
He never speeds.
He did.
One out of 12, baby.
As soon as they said red light, I said, oh, man, they got him.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, now the story's complete.
No, it's it. It's it. I was gonna tell that story, but now I got nothing to talk about.
You love Morales.
The, just briefly, the library thing. You're gonna love the library. But I've gotten a few calls, and I know we all have, in regards to the trash pickup, and everybody's kind of nervous about it. And really, I have to commend staff. I've talked to a few of the folks here, and we're ready for it. We hope it doesn't last long. But just because the question was, do we still put the trash out? And yes, you do. And you leave it out there. My understanding is, you leave it out there, and what's gonna happen is, as soon as it's over and they get through this headache, they're gonna reinforce their number of workers, pickups, and get caught up. So I just wanted to say, those were the questions, and I just wanted to be clear on that. Outside of that, just our condolences, Angela, of course. We're family here, and that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so, real quick, most everybody knows WSS, the shoe store at Century and Crenshaw. They have been here since like 2005. 10 years ago, in 2015, they moved to their new location. You should really see the inside. They've lowered the inventory, so it looks like there's a lot more space inside. They got Inglewood City of Champions on the wall inside, and that Century and Crenshaw sign is everywhere. So it's really good. Myself and Big Boy were there, and it was a good day. It was Saturday morning. And going back to the trash, 122 West Nutwood, between 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM right now, if, excuse me, between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM right now, if the demand is higher, they'll go from 7:00 to 5:00. You bring, you have to bring your trash bagged, and it'll be picked up from that location. Our anticipation is that this strike, which is in sympathy for the union in Boston that called the strike, will last no more than five days. And with that, we're going to close the meeting in the name of Cornelius Tatum Jr., the uncle of Angela.